There it is.
Amazing. Good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, March 21st, and this is the Hanson Select Board meeting being televised by Whitman-Hanson Community Access Television. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. And with that, Mr. Weeks, we're going to do public announcements, and then we will be adjourning to executive session.
All right. Announcements. Nomination papers for the May 2023 town election are now available at the Town Clerk's Office for the following offices. Moderator for a three-year term, two Select Board for three-year terms, Assessor for a three-year term, Board of Health for a three-year term, Cemetery Commissioner for a three-year term, Planning Board for a five-year term, Hanson Housing Authority for a five-year term, two trustees of Public Library for three-year terms, Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Committee pre-K through 12 for a three-year term, Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Committee pre-K through 12 for remaining two-year term, Water Commissioner for a three-year term. Each candidate prior to obtaining blank nomination papers shall sign a statement containing his/her name and address to the town office for which he/she intends to be a candidate. Last day to obtain nomination papers is Monday, March 27th, 2023, and nomination papers must be returned to the Town Clerk's Office by 5:00 p.m. Friday, March 31st, 2023. A minimum of 50 certified signatures of registered voters is necessary in order for a candidate's name to be placed on a ballot. We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the newly revitalized Cable and Internet Committee, Community Preservation and Highway Study Committee. Volunteer applications may be found on the town's website at www.hanson-ma.gov or by calling the Select Board's office at 781-293-2131. Dollars for Scholars is holding an Electronic Recycling Day. Whitman and Hanson Dollars for Scholars is planning a spring electronic recycling day at the former McQuann School in Hanson on Saturday, March 25th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Residents and non-residents can dispose of their unwanted electrical items, which they may not be able to do away with by conventional trash methods. A fee will be assessed, which will support DFS Scholarship Awards Program. Pricing for specific items can be found on Dollars for Scholars website. Those unable to attend may call ahead for an alternate daytime. For more information, please contact Mike at 781-252-9683 or visit www.witmanandhanson.dollarsforscholars.org. Whitman-Hanson Regional High School Spring Track Team partnering with Project 351 and Cradles to Crayons is holding a clothing drive. There is a box located in the lower level of Town Hall by the stairwell for all collections. They are accepting new and gently-used clothes, coats, hats, gloves, shoes, and pajamas. All socks and underwear must be new. Last day to drop off will be March 31st, 2023. For additional information, please contact Noah Roberts at noah.roberts@whrsd.org or Brianna Codio at brianna.codio@whrsd.org. And we have two upcoming meetings, Select Board April 4th, 2023, and Select Board April 11th, 2023.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weeks. With that, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Robert O'Brien. Executive Session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares administrative professional union, an executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to review and approve executive session minutes, March 14th to 2023, January 24th, 2023, February 21st, 2023, March 7th, 2023. I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Aye.
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 We are now entering executive session, and we will leave executive session and return to open session when we are finished. Thank you. Okay, and welcome back to the Hanson Select Board meeting of Tuesday, March 21st. And again, this meeting is being televised by Whitman-Hanson Community Access Television. We were just in executive session, we're coming out of executive session to announce that the town is entering into a employment contract between Robert O'Brien and the town of Hanson. As some of you may recall, Ms. Fire Chief Thompson is retiring effective May 8th, 2023, and we are hiring Robert J. O'Brien Jr. as the acting fire chief for a period of April 7th through May 8th, 2023, and then entering into an agreement for a term commencing April 2023, ending on June 30th, 2026, unless sooner terminated as here and after provided. Hopefully, that does not happen, for Robert J. O'Brien Jr. to be our fire chief. And we are thrilled to be entering into this contract with him. He got the unanimous support of everybody on the board. As anybody that has had anything to do with Mr. O'Brien knows, he's extremely dedicated to the town. He has risen through the ranks. He has time and time again demonstrated his capabilities and commitment, and I can't think of anybody finer to step in Chief Thompson's shoes when he leaves. So with that, I will entertain a motion to enter into a contract with Robert J. O'Brien Jr. for a period beginning April 2023 and ending on June 30th, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and congratulations to Robert J. O'Brien Jr. Okay. Next on the agenda is a library update, and with us we have the library director, Karen Stolfer, and the library board of trustees. President?
Chair.
Chair, thank you, sorry, Corinne. Ms. Corinne Cofardo. So Karen, I did get, if you wanted to get up and just tell us where you're at, we'd love to hear it.
Sure, yep. So I have a few things to update you on, and then I have a PowerPoint about our construction grant, so. But I'm happy to report that people are coming back to the library. They're borrowing items. We're seeing continued increased use of our digital resources, which really skyrocketed during COVID. We have, we're getting a lot of requests for our meeting room from local organizations as well. And of course, one of our biggest draws is our programming, and we're seeing greater attendance for those as well. So you should have received copies of our March and April calendars. So I just wanted to highlight a couple of events we have coming up. So next week, we have a couple of weeks left in March, but we have an author talk on the 30th. It's Jane Healy. She writes historical fiction novels, and she's coming to discuss her newest book, Good Night from Paris. It's set in World War II. It's about a Hollywood actress in Nazi-occupied France. And then coming up in April, we have a lot going on during the April Vacation Week. We have, I wanted to point out, our foundation is having a night of singo at the old Hitching Post, and if you're not familiar with singo, it's kind of like bingo, but instead of numbers on the cards, you have song titles, and then the host will play snippets of music, and you have to try to match the song title that you hear to your card to get singo.
And what night is that, Karen?
It's Wednesday, April 19th.
Okay, John Pat mentioned it the other day. Okay, yeah, that looks fun.
Yeah, it should be a really good night. You know, sponsoring the foundation, all the proceeds go to them to support the library, so. We also have our annual Family Fun Day on the April 21st, and this year we're featuring a drum music program for all ages, and we always have face painting and crafts and refreshments as well, so that should be a fun day. The following week is National Library Week, and our Friends group is doing a book sale, so we encourage people to come out and support the Friends on that Saturday, the 29th. And then in addition to our events, I also would like to highlight our Library of Things, so you should have gotten a printout of that. This is from our website. So this is a collection where you're able to borrow non-traditional items. So we have things like metal detectors. We have a lot of jigsaw puzzles, which have been extremely popular. A lot of people have donated items to us. We have yard games, educational kits for kids of all different topics, Roku streaming sticks, mobile hotspots. So we are trying to expand this collection, and if anybody has any suggestions for, you know, items that they'd like to see us carry, we're taking suggestions. And then if people would like to donate any new or like new items, we just ask that they check with us first to make sure we have storage space. So that's something that we're, it's really, you know, libraries are kind of a new thing that's coming forward.
I actually saw a guy using the metal detector down by.
Oh, really? Okay, yeah. We have an adult one and a kid's one, too. We got a couple of the kids ones. They really love that.
Yeah, they were having fun.
I didn't know you guys had one. That's fun.
Yeah, yeah, we have a lot of interesting stuff, too, so it's great to check that out. In other news, Mary Collins and I welcomed our full-time custodian. He started yesterday, and we are looking forward to, you know, he seems great. He's really proactive with, you know, looking at cleaning and repair stuff that's coming up, and, you know, we're excited to have one person handle the whole building. We think that'll be really good for proper maintenance of the building, so. And then I am pleased to announce that we've been awarded a Massachusetts Cultural Council Grant for $42,520. It was beyond what we expected, but we're really, we're really excited. Some of the ideas we have for using the funds are some programming, expanding the Library of Things, as I mentioned. We're going to look into some interactive play products for children, maybe an audiovisual system for our meeting room, some other technology upgrades, and then maybe some new furniture that needs replacing. So we're looking forward to improving library services with those funds. So that's my brief update. Any questions before I move on to the PowerPoint?
So with all the programs you have, let's say, for example, and you may know where this is going, Karen, not only do you get books from other libraries, you also get college textbooks from other libraries.
We can sometimes, yeah.
And so I want to say publicly that John and Julia and yourself did outstanding work trying to find a citizen, a college textbook, because they, for whatever reason, they were going to start school late, they were going to start without it, and John worked diligently on a Friday night to find that person, textbook, found it in a small college in Weston, Mass, and then Julia worked on it Monday. So I know that that person would like to thank you very much for getting that done. I think his staff down there is outstanding.
Thank you.
And I think he is doing really well, so.
We appreciate that.
I just wanted people to know that it's more than just getting books or movies, that they can actually get a textbook. That Amazon was going to take 10 days, so. Yeah, just some of the stuff that people don't know that actually go on there is just great.
Yeah, I would like to thank my staff, too. Like, they're just great. You know, we work really well together, and it's, yeah. We hear a lot of great things. People appreciate their, their work that they put in, so.
So thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions? I'm excited about this little Library of Things. Is there a list on the Hanson Public Library?
Yeah, so the printout is from our website, so you can narrow it down by different categories, too. I don't think that showed up on the printout, but most of the things are first come, first served, but there's a couple of things, like the street hotspots, the Roku sticks that you have to reserve online, but.
You have a cornhole game, too? My word, okay. You've got it all happening there at the library. Okay, and then Karen, I think you were going to give us a library construction grant update.
Yes, so I did have a PowerPoint. I don't know, did you guys, do you have it on?
We have the, we have it in front of us.
Okay, you have it in front of you, okay. Yeah, so I'm here to tell you about the Massachusetts Public Library Construction Program and the new grant round that they just announced, and feel free to interrupt me with any questions. So the first slide has some background about the program. It is a state-run program. It provides towns with funds to improve library facilities. It's funded through capital bond bills, and it's subject to an annual spending cap, and the Mass Board of Library Commissioners are the ones who administer the program. So if they receive, say, $150 million bond, they can spend up to $24 million of that per year on projects. Just an overview, so the program does cover new construction, or covers a complete renovation or expansion of an existing building, or if you have a building that you want to renovate and turn it into a library, it'll cover those projects as well. Any proposed facility has to meet the 30-year needs of the community for library service. It used to be 20 years. This year, they've made a lot of different changes to this grant round, so they've changed that to 30 years. And some of you may have heard that when the current facility was built, a grant was applied for through this program, but it was denied. And I do have the comments from the review team that looked at the application at the time, and two of the comments that stand out are, "This library is not planned for 20 years," and "The children's area is not large enough." So those are really two key factors that are driving our interest now in applying, you know, the library that we have now. Back then, they said it wasn't planned for 20 years, and obviously, we're another 10 years or 13 years past that date. And then the children's area, you know, that's one of our biggest things that we do, children's programming, and just the facility is just not sufficient for that anymore. So there are, well, previous grant rounds had two separate applications, one for planning and design, and then a separate one for our construction, but now they've combined them into one application, and that's going to eliminate two years from the process and reduce escalation costs. Grants typically cover about 50% of eligible costs. There's also additional funding if you commit to doing an energy-efficient building. And then projects have to meet what's called the Level of Design requirements, and those are, I won't go into all of them now, but they're all specified in regulations, what you need to have. So what is considered eligible cost and what isn't? Things like design and engineering services, demolition, site prep, actual construction, even mobile shelving and mobile service desks, those are all eligible. Things that are not covered are other types of furniture and furnishings or equipment, and then things like landscaping and paving, those are not covered by the grant. Grants can cover shared buildings, so right now, we, you know, we share the building with the senior center, so if that was going to be something that would be considered, you know, they do cover shared buildings, but there are limitations. So they will only cover the actual library portion of the building plus a proportional share of any common spaces. They do not, they wouldn't cover, like, just if we did a senior center, they wouldn't cover just the senior center portion. Restrooms and HVAC controls have to be separate, and you have to have at least one dedicated space for library programming.
Is that an issue? They have separate restrooms. The HVAC, I'm not, well, the HVAC, weren't we going to upgrade that anyway?
I mean, that's only if you're going to consider a shared building. Like, if you're considering a new building, that wouldn't be an issue, obviously, but if we were thinking of renovating and keeping what we have.
Just taking back to the plans that we have.
Well, right now, we only have the one, the meeting room, the community room that we have, so that would be an issue.
Yeah, and I think this ties into a much broader, longer, not-posted conversation about the McQuann site and what we're going to be doing with that, which of course then brings us back to the RFP on McQuann, which we just got the asbestos study back on McQuann, telling us what the specs are there. So now when we go out to RFP, we can tell people what asbestos is in there so that we're not having contractors take the second bite at the apple if we award them the contract, and then they come back and say, "Well, wait a minute, you didn't tell us there was asbestos in this corner of the building," or whatever. So more to come on that, Mrs. Rain.
Okay. So for the 2023-2024 grant, they do have two project categories, small population and standard. Obviously, we'd fall into standard population, standard category since we're 10,000 population, because it's, the cutoff point is 2,500 population or less or more. Then standard projects are further divided into tiers based on building size, and this is not the size of your existing building, it's the size of the building that you specify in what's called the Library Building Program, and that's a document that's based on data collected from the community about the needs for library services, and it serves as the guide to an architect. And we're actually ahead of the game in that we already have a building program. We had worked with a consultant in 2018 to develop one, and in that document, it was determined we would need a building of about 16,000 square feet, so we would fall into the medium category for that. Previous grant rounds had focused on building design, but the new grant round is going to focus more on need, but unfortunately, they will be more competitive. We've been told that they hope to fund about nine or 10 projects total, so that includes both standard and small population, and then there's going to be one library put on the waiting list in each tier. So in terms of funding, for planning and design, the grant covers 50% of costs up to $100,000, and we are required to appropriate $150,000 in local funding. So if your planning and design costs, say, are $140,000, the grant would pay for $70,000, and then the remaining 70 would come out of that $150 local funding. And then, as I mentioned previously, for construction, it's about 50% of eligible cost, but it is a tiered funding formula, but like I said, it averages out to about 50%. So we have a few timelines. So for the application, the next step is a letter of intent. It's due April 28th, and then there are some mandatory workshops in May, and then the full application is due May 31st of next year. For planning and design, for the $150,000 local funding, ideally, you would send that in with your application in, for May, but they do give you till June 16th of 2024, just in case, like, your town meeting doesn't match up with the timing. They give you a little bit extra time for that. They're going to be reviewing applications during the summer of 2024. Then in October of '24, they'll be announcing who is approved and who is going to be waitlisted. You do your actual planning and design work between October '24 and December '25, and that includes choosing a site and completing schematic designs. And then, excuse me, review work of your schematic designs, that would be done late '25, early '26, and if you don't meet the level of design at first, you have two months to resubmit, resubmit those. Then for the construction phase, grants would be approved in March '26. The design work is completed in June '26 to June '27. Bidding and contracts are in summer '27, and they estimate projects would take about 16 to 24 months, so you'd be looking at a building opening in about 2029 would be the timeline for that. So as I said, the next step is a letter of intent. For that, we have to specify a primary contact, which is recommended to be the library director, a municipal contact, which they recommend be the town administrator. We also have to list who is going to be attending the mandatory workshops. You have to have a library and a municipal representative, and again, that's recommended to be the director and the town administrator. But additional representatives are welcome, so like a town planner, select board member, library trustee, those are all welcome to also be representatives at the workshops. We need a statement of need, that's required, and I am working on a draft of that now. And then we do need a letter on municipal letterhead stating support for our intention to apply, which is signed by municipal and library officials.
Karen, what are we looking at for funding needs to send in the letter of intent? And if it doesn't cost anything at the letter of intent stage, what, where would it cost us money? Because we are meeting tonight about a budget that we were originally $1.6 million in the hole, and our town accountant and our town administrator have worked diligently to get that down, but it's not eliminated. And we also have a highway building, and those guys have been waiting for a new building for at least eight years, and they're in working conditions that are deplorable. So I'm just, I'm wondering, I hate to bottom-line it here.
No, yeah, I understand.
And ask the impolite question, but I'm just wondering, what are you looking for from the town for money to move this forward? And when would you be looking for it?
Yes, so there's no, there's no cost to apply, you know, to submit the letter of intent, there's no cost for that. For the planning, well, actually, I can go over the next thing is the application requirement, so, and after that, I can kind of explain a little bit about the funding. So for the full application, that's due May of next year, we need the documents you see on that slide. So it just so happens that our current strategic plan is expiring at the end of this fiscal year, so that needs to be updated. We also have to update our library building program that I mentioned, because it's, you know, several years out of date now. The trustees have decided to hire a consultant, so, to assist us with this. So in terms of funding for that, so we, back in 2007, the library applied for a planning and design grant through this program, and they did receive funds, but unfortunately, at that time, nothing progressed. So we still have about $30,000 from that grant to use to hire the consultant for, to help us, you know, get these documents for the application.
And do you know what the cost for getting these documents will be? The overall cost?
We're getting proposals now from consultants.
Do you believe that you?
We expect it to be probably in like the 20 to 30.
All right, so you think you have enough?
I mean, excuse me, like 10 to 30,000.
Do you have enough, you think, to cover that?
Yeah, for that, yeah. We also did also receive a $40,000 economic development earmark for this purpose, to go to our foundation, so we have that. We do have some library trust funds we can use, and then we have that $42,000 cultural council grant, so some of that could possibly be used as well. So we have the funding to do, you know, to hire the consultant for the planning, but like I said, there's no actual, the application for the original, like the letter of intent, all that stuff that's coming up soon, there's no cost for that.
And so the letter of intent is just like, we're seriously mulling this over, we want to move and move forward with this. We're not telling you what our plan is yet. We're not, you know, telling you it's been confirmed by town meeting or anything of that sort, but we're just telling you that we're starting to build momentum for this project.
Right, yeah, so the next thing we, the next sort of funding, I guess, would be at May 2024, town meeting, we would have to do that $150,000 local funding. We would have to ask for the appropriation of that. That would be the next step.
And what happens, I'd like to live in worst-case scenario, it's where I dwell. What happens if you do the letter of intent, we go to town meeting, and it doesn't pass? Do you have another shot at it, or is it like, if you don't get it by then, then you're out of the running for that?
Yeah, you'd be out of the running for that, for this grant round, yeah. We also actually are going to be issuing an RFP for a facility analysis soon. We want to have an architectural or engineering firm come in to help us identify the best option for expansion versus new construction. And then again, we would use the funding that we have, that I mentioned, for that, too, so. So that is an overview. You know, we would appreciate the board's support so that we are able to apply in terms of that letter that we need, the municipal letter, but I know it's a lot of information, so if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Did anybody have any questions? The screen, did you have any comments or thoughts or anything that you wanted to?
It's going to be an exciting process.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I don't think anybody would deny that we need to plan and that we're already sort of probably over when we should have been able to do something if we had been able to wave a magic wand and had unlimited resources, which we don't. So, yeah, so I, as far as like exploring and putting in a letter of intent, I don't have a problem with that. Does anybody have a?
I think we, I mean, we have this strategic plan project to go over facilities, needs, and funding sources, right? So I mean, this fits right in that alley. Maybe this is a great pilot to figure out how this fits in the grand scheme of organizing that. So great work on finding it.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to support the library applying for the letter of intent for the Massachusetts Public Library Construction Program.
So moved.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
I did, I said second.
Oh, okay, I thought you wanted to discuss. It's more of a statement, you know, for the library and any other thing we're going to be doing in Hanson, and I've said this before, we need to be proactive. Now, you know, Laura, when we first came here, and Joe, you were part of it, too, that the tax title properties that we worked on in 2017, '18, and '19, then COVID hit, we had to stop. I know we can't, what's the term, earmark the money?
No, but if you know it's coming, you.
Right. And, you know, this is a one-time situation for the $150,000, you know, whether it's free cash at town meeting, because we've done this and we're building up to it, and I thought that I read that, Karen, you don't have to submit it until September of '24, the $150,000.
No, it's due in June.
The timeline, planning and design?
So it's due, the $150,000, we have to appropriate it at May town meetings, because it's due.
Oh, okay. So I mean, you know, there's a chance that we can, we can do this just by using some of that money for this one-time fee. And when we stopped, I think it was down to 32 properties. And when we stopped, I think it was down to 32 properties. So there's properties out there. And, you know, whether it's for the highway department or, you know, the library or the senior center or whatever we're going to do, this is a perfect opportunity to use some of that one-time money, you know, for a situation like this.
Do we have a lot of properties that we have not put up for auction? Because I know we just auctioned a few. I know this is a little bit off topic, but we sometimes have these little tangents and we'll get back to the.
That's fine.
We do have more, yes. Okay, so we do have.
It's likely, too, that we wouldn't need the whole 150,000 you're appropriating. Because I said, the grant covers 50% up to 100,000, so.
Well, I was curious.
They just kind of have that as like a backup and to fund the other 50%.
So I was, I was, I think the devil's in the details on this. I was curious in the wording, certified copy of a vote to appropriate local funding. To me, sounds as though the state's saying, we want to know that the town's got skin in this game and that the majority of the voters in the town have said that they're behind this. So although a portion of it might be able to be funded from another source, it really looks like the state's looking for seed money from the town to say, yep, we're we're in it, we're going to support this.
Yeah, they want to make sure that the town's.
Yeah. So I, so if at some point you you and Ms. Green could do some background work to figure out if that full 150 needs to be appropriated at town meeting, or whether, in fact, it could be a combination of private and public funds, I think that's going to be very important. And we've got adequate time to find out, but I just think we need to look into it.
Yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Higgy? Okay, Mr. Weeks?
No.
Okay, you seemed very pensive over there.
No, I was just going to piggyback off of what Jim said about about tax title properties. But we also have, I'm curious, you might have already given this to us, but the the loans that we have that might be bonding out of the next couple of years?
Debt?
This is when we want to start, yeah.
The debt schedule?
Yep. So we can start game planning around that as well, because there's going to be some flexibility in that as well.
Yep. I think the first thing that comes off, and Ms. Green, if you could reach out to our treasurer, collector, and and get a list, that works into economic development stuff. It's going to work into the Highway Building Committee to see what's going on. It's going to work into this because it's quite lovely, to the extent you can switch in one project for another without adding to the debt. Not always possible, but it's quite lovely when you're able to do that.
Yes.
So if we could get that, because I think it's going to keep coming up in a variety of different ways as we crunch the numbers. But anyway, back to Ms. Stouffer. Did anybody have any further questions for Ms. Stouffer about the library construction grant update? I know I say this to you every time you come here, but I'm I'm always impressed with how much you guys are doing there, what an impact you make in the community. And I, you know, I think that you're very, you guys are very much like unsung heroes. It's something people sort of take for granted, like, oh, we've got a library and they're really good. But not every town is fortunate enough to have the staff and, you know, the creativity of the programs. And I have to say, I loved Nancy Capellini. And in my mind, she always was the epitome of an excellent library director. And you had very large shoes to fill. And I believe you have filled them and you've made it your own as well, which is always important for somebody coming in to take what they're being given, which was a great legacy, and then make it your own. And it's been wonderful to see you progress on that trajectory. So I thank you for that. And I thank all of the employees, too. Anybody have anything else? All right, so we did, we, you stopped me, and you know I've got ADHD. So we had a moved and seconded.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Now we can put a little bow on that. All right, thank you, Karen.
Thank you very much.
And please work with Ms. Green on on all the technical, you know, applications and all that. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are not going to have Mr. Tarvis here to give us a Hanson historical update. But Lynn, you did say that he had asked about the use of the Plymouth County Hospital for a photo session. I believe you said that.
He's just looking to get a vote to approve or deny. Even if it's conditional based upon the follow-up Q and A, it's perfectly fine. Just need to report something back.
I don't think that we had any, I thought we took a vote. I'd have to go back, but I did not feel that anybody had any objections to them using it. I think we simply said that there's a food pantry there, and we want to be cognizant of clients' privacy. So we would not want them there on Tuesday night.
Or Tuesday morning.
Tuesday morning at prime time taking photos, because that would violate people's privacy. And and other than that, we just wanted them to be thoughtful and considerate of the property. And we wanted them to work with Ms. Green to make sure that they had adequate liability insurance, which I know Mr. Tarvis had represented that they did in fact have. I think the question was how much to charge. And again, I think, Ms. Green, we would leave that to you to figure out what the charge would be for something like that. You know, if it works out, it might be something that they are doing on a regular basis, and it would be a modest stream of income, but it would be something. So if you want to just reach out to Mr. Tarvis and. I believe we already took a vote, but out of an abundance of caution, shall we take a vote to allow this company to do photography classes up at the Plymouth County Hospital? Nurses' quarters, I believe, is how Kurt generally refers to it. On hours in hours that exclude Tuesdays.
Right.
And for a fee as to be determined by Ms. Green in as a condition that they actually have liability insurance. Okay, so I'm entertaining that motion.
Second?
Somebody has to make a motion, okay.
I already did.
Okay, second and all in favor. Okay, great.
How about if we charge them 150,000?
There you go. That sounds pertinent.
Funding source is a solution for everything, Jim.
That sounds pertinent.
Yeah. Most people give hurdles, you give solutions.
Very competitive. Okay, with that, we have Mr. DeFrias with us for the Town Planner update. Mr. DeFrias, we would love to hear from you. And thank you for joining us.
Thanks for having me. Okay, so Town Planner update. I'm going to start with FY 2024 Community One-Stop Grant Program Expressions of Interest. So a few weeks ago, I had applied for the 2024 grant process through One-Stop, the One-Stop program, which allows you to put in five expressions of interest to get feedback on. And then, once you get the feedback, you can you can move on to the full application process. So the five projects were, the first one was 228 High Street, which would be the Hanson Food Pantry and Hanson or Plymouth County Beekeepers Association, those two buildings. And that would be under the underutilized program. And they have up to a $1 million grant to, which you could use to renovate existing buildings to meet current code requirements. And so I'm actually going to shoot for the $1 million grant, because I think those buildings, probably by the time you spend the money to get them up to 2020-whatever standards, you're probably going to be pretty close to a million dollars. So might as well shoot for the moon and see what happens. Second project was Hawks Ave for Brownfield Redevelopment, looking for a $90,000 grant The next third one was Zero West Washington Street, which is the land that is adjacent to the Water Department Building. That would be a redevelopment and permitting, which is $100,000, which would investigate the development of this vacant commercial industrial site owned by the town of Hanson for viable properties, let's say, businesses. The fourth one was a pedestrian access improvements. I'm going to try and shooting for a $750,000 grant there. And that is to, in essence, create sidewalk access from the L Z Thomas School to where we have existing sidewalks, which is approximately a high street. And then the fifth one was to develop a 40-hour, 40-y smart growth slash starter home district. That's a $75,000 grant, and that would assist us in creating these districts for affordable So that being said, the, we received, I received feedback on all five of these. The state agreed with my eligibility and the programs that they belong in. So for the food pantry, they confirm that this is falls in the building category, that it's an underutilized property program. One of the feedback, some of the feedback they gave is that the project must be able to show that they are fully funded inclusive of the underutilized programs fund or will be at the time of award. While the underutilized properties program does not require a match, projects that leverage other public and private investments may be more competitive, so we may have to look at those things. The next was Hawks Ave. They agree that this is falls under the site preparation category, that this also is best aligns with the Brownfield Redevelopment Fund. How to be competitive under that? They say they recommend that the applicant choose best efforts to describe their municipality's preferred end use of the project. Some of the feedback was for consideration, the applicant must demonstrate the availability the availability of a 20% match, which can either be cash match from another funding source or in-kind services or other non-cash matches acceptable in mass development, such as previous work conducted at the site, security measures, forgive the taxes, leave costs, et cetera. They would also prefer that these projects be completed by June 30 of 2024, which is interesting, because they're going to give us, they're going to let us know about this at the end of the year. So it's a short window that they're giving us, but I think if we get the right people, we can we can work that.
Mr. DeFrias, do you think that the fact that some work was already done under the DEP guidance by Hubble slash Light Control would count towards that? Or does it have to be ready, like, it's not past work that was done? You know, would that count towards, you know, what they're looking for for criteria?
When you talk about previous conducted, previous work conducted at the site?
Yep.
They don't give, they don't give you a definition, so I'd have to do a little investigating as to how, what are they, how are they defining that?
Okay.
So I don't have an answer for that. One of the interesting caveats on this Brownfield is that it says, "Grants from the Brownfield Redevelopment Fund may not be used for projects that result in the municipal reuse of the site." So no highway department or any other municipal use. Rather, "Applications that will result in private job creation or the creation of housing units that will benefit the community will be most competitive." That's what they'd like to see at the end result of this site. If you move forward with the grant and if we were to receive the grant. "The Brownfield Redevelopment Fund may not be used to fund sites resulting in the end use related to the cannabis industry either." So I thought those were two interesting little caveats. Yeah, two little caveats. Right, that they they tell you that at the end result, we'd like you to have you create some kind of business, but one of the businesses you can't create is the cannabis industry.
So I'm sure they probably were anticipating that. There's a number of towns that have got properties that need to be cleaned up and probably wouldn't be super appealing to any other business to locate there, but maybe people would be willing to locate a cannabis building. Now, when they say, when they say municipal use, how is that defined? So I get that, like, not for highway, not for, you know, whatever. Does that mean we could not lease the property? It's not technically the the town using it for its own purposes, but we're leasing it?
They're not specific at this point.
Okay.
So based on my interpretation at this point would be any kind of municipality, turning into some kind of municipal building, whether it's highway, town hall, fire department, whatever. Project three, which was Zero West Washington Street, the site next adjacent to the water department, they agreed that this is fits under site preparation, that it aligns with site readiness program. The awards typically range from 50,000 to 500,000. I was asking for 100,000 grand from this, from this, for this project. The fourth project, which was pedestrian improvements, they agreed that this fits under the infrastructure category and that it best aligns with Mass Works Infrastructure Program. Feedback, the Mass Works has no specific budget limit or match requirements, however, the following guidelines should be considered. Most Mass Works awards are in the one to $2 million range. The most competitive awards have considerable matching funds of 25% to 50%. Applications with both substantial grant requests will be most competitive by providing more matching funds. So the other thing is, this would have to be under contract no later than June 30 of 2024. And they would hope that the project would be completed in one to two fiscal years.
Now, Mr. DeFrias, would this give us an opportunity to perhaps reach out to Senator Brady or Representative Cutler and Decost and see if we might be able to get some money from them to be considered as the matching funds that would be outside of this grant program?
I believe that would be an interesting and good avenue to pursue, yeah. Lastly, was the starter smart growth districts. They agree that this is falls under planning and zoning and that this project aligns with the community planning grant. Under the feedback, the maximum award is 100,000 in funding for sequel entities, and it lasts about 18 months in duration. So that's, so the next step with these expressions of interest is to pursue the actual grants. And those have to be submitted no later than June 2 of this year. So what will have to happen now is, as we progress with the full applications, we'll have to get some outside proposals, because there's some of these budget numbers that we're going to have to fit in. For example, the food pantry, you know, hiring an outside consultant, like an architect to get us an idea, is it a million? Is it 750,000? Or is it 1.2 million? So we'll at least get some hard numbers now to get in for the full applications and chase the five, the five grants. So that is that aspect of what's been going on. Now, if I touch on the grants that we have received, we had that $60,000 grant for housing and economic, from Housing and Economic Development, which is to update the master plan. We've entered into a contract with OCPC, and we have to obtain, I believe it's $10,000 in additional monies through town meeting. But we have 60,000, so they'll begin the process of assisting Hanson update our current master plan, which is, was it 15 years out of date now?
15 years old.
If we did not, community preservation money could be used for the master plan. And, okay, but I mean, obviously, we're closing the warrant relatively soon, and I don't know when community preservation.
It's in there.
Huh?
Well, the the article is in there.
No, I know, but to the extent we can use community preservation money for, I don't want it to substitute for capital improvements, because that's like a false sense of security. But to the extent we can use it for any funding, I'd like to try to start thinking about that as a first line of defense, is this CPC eligible? There's a substantial amount of money that's accrued in that account and will continue to accrue. And they're doing great projects, and they're continuing to do great projects. But I I don't think in town hall, we're always thinking, let's look at CPC. So I, you know, there's nothing we can do about it now, but for future, it can be used for administrative things like housing production plan, master plan, open space plan, can all be paid for out of community preservation. And the thing that's beautiful about that, it's no additional taxation. It's already part of what people are getting taxed on, and that money is accruing.
Okay. The $90,000 grant, which we received from the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development for pedestrian improvements near the MBTA commuter rail, we've executed a contract with Verdantis. I've had a conversation with them. They're hoping to do a site visit within the next week to the area to get a better idea of what improvements need to be done. The technical assistance grant we received for the MBTA zoning, creation of the MBTA zoning for mass housing partnership. I've begun looking at the toolkit and creating districts, looking at compliance. I've also met with Dottie Folgenetti from OCPC. They'll be our. They'll be our, they'll be the ones who are assisting us in the creation of the regulations and the districts and everything. So met with her about two weeks ago. Lisa was in on that and we discussed, you know, what we're planning. So I'm into the toolkit and the nuts and bolts of creating the districts and it's a, it's a bit of a tedious program, but a bit challenging, but we'll get there. The, under the earmarks that we received, as Karen had mentioned, they have $40,000 for the library. We also had received a $25,000 from the DCR, which was for improvements, recreation improvements in the Mont Ponce neighborhood in Hanson. So I'm looking, I'm thinking the park that's down there on Hancock Street, that $25,000, we should probably consider using it for that park because I think it could use some, could use some help.
Has Adam talked to you, Tony, about that?
Uh, no, I haven't had any conversations.
Okay.
Then we have, we were, $170,000 we received from the Executive Office of Economic Development, which was to be earmarked for the Plymouth County Hospital Site, the historic Bonny House and the boardwalk from Main Street to Burridge Pond. We received a proposal from Verdantis for the boardwalk that came out to just under $45,000. So the remaining amount would be 125,600, which could be split between Bonny House and the Plymouth County Hospital Site. So that's that. Now, other things I've been working on with myself and the planning board, we have some proposed zoning amendments, which you'll be reviewing this evening on, on an article. nine total.
Well, since you're here with us, why don't we open up our, what articles are they? Do you know?
Yes. If I could just go through this quick list here.
Yeah.
And we'll circle back around. So we have proposed zoning amendments. In conjunction with the planning board, we're looking at creating additional housing in town, especially affordable housing and trying to coordinate with the Hanson Housing Authority. There is a mass housing grant. This is 10% match, but the whole idea of this mass housing grant is to assist towns, municipalities in particular, in creating affordable housing. Another project that's been sort of involved with is assisting the High Street Park Committee so they can continue their fantastic work on getting that park to come to fruition. The last, one of the last things that's happened is there's been some survey work done out there. The committee's had, had surveyors go out there and sort of lay out where some of the proposed areas of the park are going to be so they can go out and take a look. I've been assisting Economic Development Committee with their meetings and they're going to do an outreach to local businesses and let them know what the EDC is about and how they can help. Continued delegate is to the Old Colony Planning Council. They have a meeting once a month. Also looking to move forward the McQuan Highway slash Library Plan, if you will, about looking to get, you know, McQuan School knocked down, examining what to do with the reuse there. The, we're looking to possibly have an article for some appropriate some monies for a survey plan to be done at the Highway Department, their current site, which would then lead to a feasibility plan. Also been looking at our MS4, just loosely, you know, that's Highway Department, they're in charge of that, but I just been sort of, I asked for some information from environmental partners just to get an idea of what was going on, if there was anything I could help out there. We have a general bylaw update that I worked with the building inspector on for in-ground pool demolition. Also, the planning board is looking at our stormwater bylaw. That bylaw talks about a form and a fee structure, but no form or fee structure was ever created, so we'll be looking at doing something with that. Also, I've begun the process, it's been a slow process, but to train outreach to developers with outstanding open projects that have not been completed, to try and find out what the status and what their intent is and hopefully get them to complete the projects and so that we can get to, say, roadway acceptances and get these projects closed out. We've had the tip project in McQuan Street, the last thing we had going on there was we met with environmental partners, members of Mass DOT, local, our local politicians to try and plead our case with that water line and the issues that we're running into. And I think they're sort of, they haven't got back to us yet, but they're working on it.
They're waiting on federal, they're waiting on federal grants on that to see if we can get some federal money.
So, and lastly, we just completed some administrative assistant interviews last week and hopefully we'll be choosing a candidate soon. So that's my list of items that I'm sort of working on. And if you'd like to go over the zoning.
I just think while we've got you here.
Sure.
Because I, I don't know if anybody else is going to be able to answer the questions.
Can I just ask?
Miss, oh, sure, go ahead. Mrs. Ray.
Where did the swimming pool thing come from? Are people, are people caving in swimming pools?
Well, what the building department has found that our Hanson didn't have any good regulations regarding the demolition of in-ground pools.
Right.
And there's a specific way it should be done and.
Well, I know of one that is a gigantic concrete block in the backyard.
Yeah.
They filled it in with concrete.
Okay. Wow, that's one way to do it.
I guess so.
So.
Permanent.
The building inspector had looked at other municipalities and found a different municipality he thought that had very good bylaw. So, so it's a case of, we don't have a really good one.
Right.
And so we need to implement one so there isn't, it doesn't leave it open to interpretation.
Exactly.
So.
I just wanted to point out to the articles that Tony is speaking of is Article Number Eight, Article Number Thirty, and with the bylaw proposed changes, that starts at Article, it's Article Thirty Seven.
Article Eight, Article Thirty, and.
Article Thirty Seven.
Okay, and Article Thirty Seven. That's great. And then I, even though it's actually proposed by the Stormwater and Drainage Management Committee, I think Article Seven would be worth a brief discussion. So let's, let's begin there, shall we? So that's to see if the town will vote to request that the Hanson Planning Board during the next revision of the, of the Hanson Subdivision Control Law, consider and/or require that all stormwater retention areas be placed in underground chambers if site conditions allow and conform with all state stormwater guidelines in place at the time or to take any action relative thereto. Now, folks will remember that we had Mr. Howard and Mr. Mansfield here at a couple of meetings, we've had Mr. Howard, to talk about the retention, detention, the sitting water, the mosquito breeding, et cetera, et cetera, that is involved with, with that. This article, although proposed by the Stormwater and Drainage Management Committee, one of the things this board had told that committee is you need to get the support of the planning board because they'd be the ones who are enforcing, who are reviewing, et cetera, et cetera, and we're not going to step on another elected board's feet. We, we need to stay in our swim lane with respect to that. So I think this article doesn't absolutely say that we're going to pass that regulation. It basically says that during the next revision, revision of the Hanson Subdivision Control Law, that you're going to consider.
Yes, so if I may, the, last Monday, we had a hearing, the planning board met. Mr. Howard was there with Mr. Mansfield. Planning board did discuss their original article. After discussion, I had proposed the article that you see and Mr. Mansfield was going to take it back to the Drainage Committee, who met last Friday, I believe.
Yep.
And Mr. Mansfield contacted me via email on Monday, stating that the Drainage Committee was in support of the article as it's written.
Okay.
This on next Monday will be discussed at the planning board. They had seen, they have seen that article as it's written, but they have not voted on it, so I cannot speak directly for the board or individually. I can only say that the polls seem to be in favor of that article versus the previous article, the way it was written.
Okay.
So, but the answer is yes, so that the next time that the subdivision control law comes up to be revised, the planning board would look at that retention basins, not detention, just retention basins.
Yep.
And look at the regulations at the time that are in place to see if it makes sense to place those underground.
Okay, that's very helpful. I'm hoping that we might be able to get a little bit of further explanation in language in the explanation that blows it out just a little bit because although the article itself says, look, we're going to take a look at this when it comes up, it, the explanation is a little stronger. It would lead one to believe that the change might be being made, so I'm just wondering if we could add some sort of softening language there so that it, it syncs up with the article itself. Article Eight, to see if the town will vote to amend Article 3.3 of the general bylaw of the town of Hanson to include the following regulations regarding the demolition and disposal of in-ground pools. So I think you just explained to us what the deal is with that. Did anybody have any questions for Tony on that one? Okay. And then that brings us to Article Thirty, I believe.
Thirty seven.
Thirty.
Thirty. Okay. Which is to see if the town will vote to appropriate $30,000 to retain the services of a qualified firm to provide an assessment for environmental and hazardous materials and land surveying services to determine and establish existing property lines of the Highway Department located at 797. So that makes a huge amount of sense to me since one of the moving parts of the potential McQuan Highway building and all these kind of interrelated projects is what are we looking at for the legacy that might be left at the old highway building? And I think it's important for us to get some type of a sense of that so that we're going in eyes wide open when we're making decisions about the use of all of the properties.
I would like to say that the planning board has not officially voted on that.
Okay.
That will be before them next Monday. So if the board wants to move that forward, you may just want to condition it with, once you get the vote of the planning board.
Okay. Yeah, oh, well, yeah, that.
It was discussed at their last meeting. The only question was, you know, about funding and as with many things, so.
Yep.
And so that was, we were looking, we're going to look into funding options and also we're trying to track down some potential survey information that may have already existed for that site.
I don't think we're on lockdown quite yet for the need, we need to place, but as far as recommendations, we've got a bit of time on that, so.
By next Tuesday, I should be able to provide.
Yes, so that should be within our timeframe, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then that brings us to.
Thirty seven.
Perhaps the longest article in the warrant, which is Article Thirty Seven.
There are nine and on the second sheet, the second page, I've given a brief description of each one, and that's what I'll use to just describe what, what we're, we're looking to do here. So the first one is Section Six, and many of these fall into Section Six, which is Use Regulations. And so the first one, Section Six, Use Regulations. Sections of the Use Regulations have been updated to provide clarification and to address issues raised by citizens and departments within the town to address the following upland requirements. The town has a requirement, says 90% upland for a new lot, but it doesn't say contiguous upland. And so what you have sometimes is someone will come in with a piece of property and they'll have three pockets of upland that make up the 90%. And you may have a small pocket of what, you know, you may have a small pocket of upland that you're trying to shoehorn a lot, a lot of into, say, a septic or driveway house. The municipalities use the word contiguous, so it just means that that 90% has to be in one area, not divided up into six or seven or three or four. So we're, we're putting, we're adding that word contiguous into the bylaw.
Yep.
The second is setback requirements from two streets. This is being updated based on concerns raised by various departments. So the currents, the current requirement is if you're on a corner lot and there's, so you're on a corner lot, two streets, you have to meet the front yard setback on both streets. And that creates a lot of issues for trying to set a house or a structure or an accessory structure. So what this will do is it'll require that you choose one of those streets will be the front yard setback, the secondary street will be a side yard setback. So it'll also eliminates a lot of folks from having to go to the Board of Appeals for variances. Because variances are very specific as, you know, this, the criteria that they have to meet before they, so before they can be granted. Realistically, the variance is not something that just can be granted out, just handed out like candy to some degree. So this will help eliminate some of that, take some of the burden off of the requirements of citizens and all the Board of Appeals. So, and it'll sort of clarify that. In your packet, you'll also see the actual sections of the zoning bylaw and you'll see in the top right corner of the page, the number one, which will go along with number one on the first page. So you can just read through as.
I'm not sure we actually have that in our packet.
I know.
Yeah. That's okay, Lynn.
Okay. I'll make sure that you do get that.
Okay.
I thought that we submitted that. So the, number two is detached accessory apartments or accessory dwelling units. So this falls under Section 6.1. This would be a new bylaw. This section would authorize the provision of detached accessory dwelling apartments, and it's intended to increase the number of small dwelling units available in town, increase the range of choice of housing accommodations, encourage greater diversity of population with particular attention to young adults and senior citizens, and encourage a more economic and energy efficient use of the town's housing supply while maintaining the appearance and character of the town's one-family neighborhoods. So the accessory dwelling units, we have a bylaw that we allow in-law apartments. This would be basically the creation of, and I'll read the definition, a detached accessory apartment, a detached accessory apartment that is located on the same lot as the single family dwelling and that is located in the, in a detached accessory structure, i.e. garage, barn, carriage house. Sheds, greenhouses, chicken coops may not be utilized for a detached accessory apartment. Detached accessory apartments may be allotted within Residence A, double A, and B districts only. We know that these have been created in the past in town and they've been created without permits.
Mm-hmm.
And while I've been working on this, I've actually had probably at least six different people come in and ask me, does Hanson have a bylaw for, that allows for an apartment, if you will, above a garage or convert a garage to an apartment? And I said, no, we don't. And this actually is allowed in many other towns. The regulations you see before you are a foundation based in the town of Lexington. And North Hampton also was, let's say, a, they were the, one of the first towns to do this, them and Lexington, and they found it to be very successful. It's sort of a way of allowing, let's say, an elderly couple who wants to stay on the property but wants to downsize and they want to have their children living with them, but they don't want to live in the same house, like in an in-law apartment. You know, mom and dad or the kids could live out, you know, the, convert the. they convert the garage or the space above the garage into living space, and they can all live on the same lot. It requires that, you know, the owner of the property live on the property. It's not, this isn't going to be a case of, you know, you just move out and I'm going to rent my house out and I'm going to rent out my accessory dwelling unit. No. They have to live on the property most of the year. Takes into account for folks that maybe go south for the winter. It also, to some degree, it's sort of creating housing without cutting down more trees or using up more land. They would have to meet all the building code regulations. They would have to meet all the regulations regarding Wetlands Protection Act, border health, all that for it to work. So it's not as if, you know, again, that you could take a shed or a chicken coop and turn it into a place to live. So that, that, uh, that will help increase the housing stock to some degree in town. And again, we've had interest in this. Many people have come, like I said, have come to ask me about this. You know, to the point where I was like, "No, we just don't have those regulations yet." We're hoping to, but we just don't have them yet. And hopefully, it'll deter that creation of illegal apartments that we know tends to happen. You know, and you don't find out about it till it's already too late, you know? So that's a new, a new bylaw. The third one is under Section 6. It'll be, it'll be known as Section 6O under the current bylaw, in the current bylaw book, which is for battery storage farms. These Battery Energy Storage System laws adopted to advance and protect the public health, safety, and welfare and quality of life in the Town of Hanson by creating regulations for the installation and use of battery energy storage systems with the following objectives: To provide a regulatory scheme for the designation of properties suitable for the location, construction, and operation of battery energy storage systems; To ensure compatible land use in the vicinity of the areas affected by battery energy storage systems; To mitigate the impacts of battery energy storage systems on the environmental resources and other protected resources; To create synergy between battery energy storage system development and the August 2018 Commonwealth of Mass Act of to advance clean energy that established a clean peak standard energy storage system. What these are are battery storage farms. These are not necessarily associated with solar farms. So you have a piece of land and you put in 9,000 square feet of lithium-ion batteries. Electricity is fed to the batteries. The batteries are charged up. The energy is stored in the batteries and then will be released when needed back to the grid. So Town of Hanson has, does not have any regulations regarding these at all. So anyone could come in and put them just about anywhere. The zoning act, as far as like solar energy, you can't ban it outright, but you can have regulations. And this is what this will do here for the battery store. We already have one project that's actually coming into town with this, and it's 9,000 square feet of lithium-ion batteries. And obviously, the concern is, you know, there's the green energy aspect, but there's also the danger aspect of a lithium-ion battery if and when there's a fire. And I know everyone's seen fires on these batteries. They can get pretty intense and, you know, toxic, toxicity of whatever. So that's what this would regulate. It doesn't ban them, but it would regulate where we could sort of put them. And we'd be looking at trying to put them in areas, let's say, in the industrial, commercial area or maybe in areas with large swaths of land, maybe in the agricultural type of areas where they're not necessarily going to have someone come into, into a subdivision and put in 9,000 square feet of batteries next to your house. So we can't ban them, but we can, we can regulate them. So that's what these, that's what this bylaw would address. The fourth one is medium and small ground-mounted solar arrays. This would be a new bylaw. And it would add to our, we currently have bylaws for large ground-mounted solar arrays. But because green energy is moving at the pace it is, there are medium and small ground-mounted solar arrays. Now, the ground-mounted solar arrays are just that. These are, you may have seen them. There are three, there's at least three in town. And so this would provide regulations for that. So let me just read. So the purpose of this bylaw amendment is to promote the creation of new, promote the creation of new, large, medium, and small-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations by providing standards for the placement, design, construction, operation, monitoring, modification, and removal of such installations that address public safety, minimize impacts on scenic, natural, and historic resources, and to provide adequate financial assurance for the eventual decommissioning of such installations. There's, a lot of folks would rather not put solar on their house if they don't have to. So the small ground-mounted solar arrays are an option. The state would prefer not to see these put in front yards. I know, I think we have one that's in a side yard. So this would provide some guidance as to where you could place them, what type of screening you'd have to have around them, how large they could be, what the setbacks would have to be from a property line. So it's just to give guidance. We know they're coming. This is, you know, the green energy is the way, is the, is the future. And so we need to sort of, you know, be aware of it. The regulations are based on guidance provided by the state. Number five, pork chop and hammerhead lot amendments. So that one, we, we call them pork chop and hammerhead lots. We're going to just rename them estate and retreat lots. Just sounds better, you know? Number six, lot access regarding driveways. We're clarifying, as far as driveways, say, one driveway per lot so that we don't, we don't have a situation, maybe let someone's on a corner lot and they put a second driveway in and they're using the parked trucks and, you know, just kind of cleaning things up. Section 7C is regarding accessory buildings such as sheds. That's an amendment, and that deals with setback to the property lines. Section 7D is regarding off-street parking. Man, let me see. So the current bylaw for off-street parking in Hanson is very confusing. It doesn't give a clear direction. It just says, "One space constable, 300 feet, square feet, plus backing up and this and then the other." So putting in clear and concise regulations. You know, parking spaces, this by this. An aisle is this, is this, is this wide, you know? Based on, right now, it's based on net area. We're going to base it on gross area because to try and determine what a net area of a building is, is open to interpretation. And someone may increase their net area and then have an undersized dung of parking. So it addresses all that. And then the last one is for adequate access determination. So the purpose of this bylaw is to amend and provide clarification and additional regulations to the Adequate Access and Improvements to Private Ways bylaw. The proposed bylaws seek to clarify existing confusing and ambiguous bylaw requirements and provide additional regulation where needed. I'll go back to the pork chop lot one here. So the purpose of this bylaw amendment is to provide clarification and additional regulation to the following areas. Section 7, pork chop and hammerhead lots to be renamed as estate or retreat lots, which would bring the bylaw in line with surrounding communities. Lot access, driveways, to allow only one driveway per dwelling lot for proposed construction activities. Section 7C, to clarify existing accessory building requirements regarding setbacks to property lines. And 7D is to clarify existing off-street parking and loading areas. So there's a lot on your plate there. And for some, I'm sorry that you don't have the actual bylaw. I thought I had made copies as part of the package, but I will...
Is the bylaw that he refers to going to be part of the booklet?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So those are all the amendments that I've been working on in conjunction with the Planning Board, and they've been reviewed by Town Council. And any, any adjustments were made based on their recommendation. So there's a lot to take in there, but it's, you know, hopefully going to clarify a lot of ambiguity in the bylaw.
Okay. All right, that's very helpful. Did anybody have any questions for Mr. DeFries? All right, thanks, Tony. We really appreciate it.
And I will give this, I'll give you my set, Madam Chair.
Oh, okay. If you want to give it to Ms. McDowell, and then she can make photocopies for all of us. Or if you've got it electronically. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
So that's all the town planner has for tonight.
That's it? That's all you've got? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay. Did you guys want to, since we're already kind of knee-deep in the more, just dive right in there and take it out of order? I was going to ask, do people need a little biology break for five minutes? No, would...
Yes.
What's the consensus? Okay, let's take a little five-minute biology break. Okay, great. And welcome back to our March 21st, 2023 Hanson Select Board Meeting, being televised by Whitman Hanson Community Access Television. This is our third installation and hopefully the last of the evening. We apologize for multiple interruptions. Okay. So we had already dived into a bit of the annual and special town meeting. And since we're kind of already in that mental time, that kind of mental frame of mind, let's just continue on and take things a bit out of order from our agenda. So if we start with the May Annual Town Meeting, Lisa, what are the deadlines for us to place and recommend? When do we need to vote to place? When do we need to vote to close? When do we need to vote to recommend?
So this evening is the vote to close the warrant.
Okay.
For, so we can move forward with the articles that we have. No further articles are accepted.
Okay. So, so do we also need to vote to place them this evening?
You do not need to vote to place them.
All right, but we should to the extent it's not, you know, they're sort of like, there's some that are just sort of perfunctory, kind of, you know, there shouldn't be much of a controversy. I say that, and I've called in the universe in on us, but, okay. So for instance, Article number one, the Town Officers Committee Special Committees. And as, I just want to mention that we have not made any recommendations. So throughout the warrant, if we can strike any indication that anybody has recommended, because as far as I know, FinCom hasn't voted on these either. So I will entertain a motion to place and recommend Article one.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Article two, to see if the town will authorize treasurer-collector to enter into compensating balance agreements during fiscal year 2024 as permitted by Mass General Law. I will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Article three, to see if the town will vote to fix the salary and compensation of paid elected officers and committees of the town as follows or take any action in relation there to town clerk. $75,639 to $77,151. I will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved. Second.
Article four. Oh, I'm sorry.
Aye.
I'll get a vote.
Yeah, oh, thank you. I thought you were saying something else. All in favor? Great, fantastic. Thank you, Joe. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $35,000 from Computer Services to add to the Technology Department budget to hire a part-time information technology assistant for 19 hours per week, proposed by Select Board Wage and Personnel. I will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate by the transfer from available funds a sum of money to transfer from Town Ambulance Funds, Water Department, Water Surplus, Title V Special Revenue, MW PAT Loan Repayments Receipts Reserved for Appropriation Conservation Notice of Intent, Overlay Surplus Plus and Fund Balance Reserved for Reduction of Future Excluded Debt to Defray Charges and Expenses of the Town, including debt and interest, and Provide for a Reserve Fund for the 2024 fiscal year. This says, "Waiting on FY '24 Budget to Insert." So we don't have the dollar amounts on that, right, Ms. Green?
That's correct.
All right. So I will entertain a motion to place, but obviously, it's a, it's a required article. We have it in every year. But we cannot vote to recommend until we actually have the dollar amounts. So I will entertain a motion to place.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Okay. To see if the town will vote to amend the wage and personnel bylaws, Article 2-12, Classification and Compensation by Deleting Sections 11A through 11E in its entirety and inserting the new Sections 11A through 11E as shown below. And again, this is an annual exercise that we go through to clean up all various salaries and wages. So I will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. Moving right along. Article seven, this was the one that we discussed with Mr. DeFries, where they're going to take it into consideration when they revise, you know, do the next revision of the Hanson Subdivision Control Law. So we did mention that there was a little cleaning up of the language and also that it had not actually been approved by the Planning Board. So to that end, I would, I would entertain a motion to place, but let's wait to recommend until we hear back from planning.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Okay. Article eight. Similarly, I, I don't think they had officially voted on all of their articles. So this is for the pools. I will entertain a motion to place.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? And the Nathaniel Mill Committee, $25,000 to install the water wheel. It's, this is required to be able to finish the water wheel and install the stand with an oversight when the wheel was created.
Yeah, this didn't go to Capitol.
It did not go because it's $25,000, and I think your threshold is $35,000.
Yes, correct. So this is okay to be here as well.
Yeah. It's, it's okay to be here. Where, where are people on this? I mean, as far as I know, we already appropriated money at a prior town meeting for them to actually fix the water wheel. But what I'm getting from this is that they couldn't complete the water wheel because they need the stand on which the water wheel would sit.
The water wheel has been fixed, but not installed, correct?
I cannot validate...
Stand the side of the building?
The state, no, there's like a little platform that holds the water wheel. I'm not a water wheel expert.
You're not?
No, not tonight. So do we want more information on that? I don't even really honestly feel comfortable on, I mean, I guess we can place it. We could always move to, to, you know, pass it over if we don't get the right information.
Wasn't it $15,000 or $17,000 that we already...
I, it was somewhere in that vicinity. And it was quite controversial, actually. It was the, it was one of those town meetings where you think you know what's going to be the controversial article, and then you're like, the water wheel was the controversial article? So I'm not sure this won't be controversial since it's additional money, but...
So the water wheel was a lot less than the...
No.
No, 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 no.
How much was the water wheel fixed?
Already, already spent $17,000.
Yeah.
Now they want $25,000.
I don't know if they've spent it. They, it was appropriated to. I don't know where they're at.
I will say that the Nathaniel Thomas Mill is a, is a landmark in town. We don't want it to look...
It is a landmark. I, I'm wondering what, and I'll definitely entertain a discussion about this, but I think it might be good for us to vote to place it, but I think we're going to need to hear from the Nathaniel Thomas Mill Committee on, on what the status is of the water wheel.
Right.
Do you guys agree?
Yes.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to place.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I can't believe they replaced it again. It was replaced already in my tenure here in town.
Well, I don't know. It's getting a lot of use, I guess. All right. So that brings us to Article 10, which is, see if the town will vote to update the town's policies and procedures. And we need an explanation, and obviously, we need a dollar amount. But I think we have all agreed at the strategic planning session and in other discussions that we've had that we need to have a
Yes.
policy and procedure manual. I don't think there's any denying that. So I think, again, since we don't have all of the information, we can't vote to recommend it, but we certainly can vote to place it. I will entertain that motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? All right. And then Article 11, we need dollar amounts plugged in by the town accountant. Every year, Community Preservation receives money from the state, Every year, Community Preservation receives money from the state, and they receive money from the taxes, and we need this broken down. But I think, again, we can vote to place. We just can't, and actually, because we don't have the dollar amounts, we can't vote to recommend, so I will entertain a motion to place.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Okay, great. Article Twelve, to see if the town will vote to transfer from Community Preservation Fund Open Space Recreation Reserve and Undesignated Reserve Fund Balance a sum of two hundred and fifteen thousand to fund the construction of a new soccer field. Now, the explanation indicates, these funds are requested by Hanson Parks and Fields Commission to create new playing fields. Additional funding to be used for this project includes an earmark from the state of Massachusetts, as well as contributions, seventy-five hundred from Whitman Hanson Youth Soccer and Hanson Youth Football. Fantastic project. I love the fact that it's all kinds of money from different sources, and none of it is additional taxation, which is a beautiful thing, and we're gonna end up with a revitalized Hanson Middle School field. However, in order, the two fifteen is coming from Community Preservation. The two hundred thousand is an earmark from the state of Massachusetts. Now, it's important to understand that an earmark is a reimbursable grant from the state. So, even if we vote to place and recommend, which I assume we're going to, because it's, you know, Community Preservation says they've got the money and they're bullish about it, we've got another two hundred thousand dollars that town meeting needs to vote to appropriate for this project and be reimbursed. So, Ms. Green, if you could reach out to, I believe, it's Adam Valachovic, who's, you know, kind of commandeering this particular article. We need to have an article that says that we're voting to front the two hundred thousand dollars that we'll get from the state of Massachusetts earmark, but we have to front it, and then we get reimbursed. So would you mind reaching out to him on that? So, but back to Article Twelve, we will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
So does the one article you're talking about go right with this one, like it'll be?
It will have to be another separate article, because Community Preservation can't propose an article aside from the use of Community Preservation.
But in order, it goes right next to this one?
It doesn't really matter where the placement is, just as long as the connection is made and the explanation syncs up. It can be placed anywhere in the. And Article Thirteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer from Community Preservation Open Space for the purposes of placing a conservation restriction on sleeper property. Now, you will recall, actually, sleeper property was a classic case, where we did have a reimbursable grant from the state. We did get reimbursed from the state, which is wonderful. And there was also Community Preservation money used to purchase the property. In order to comply with Community Preservation regulations, you need to have a deed restriction placed on the property, a conservation deed restriction, where somebody will monitor that that property is being used in the way that it was supposed to be used, which is for conservation purposes. The trustees of the reservation have agreed to be that entity. They require getting a payment in order to do that, and that's what this achieves. So, I'm sorry, Wildland Trust, I'm saying trustees, but it's Wildland Trust. So, I will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor? Article Fourteen, this would be for eight thousand, five hundred sixty-five for the purposes of restoring eighteen fifty-seven linen maps of Plymouth County. I will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Okay, great. See if the town will vote to appropriate sixty-five thousand, again, from Community Preservation, to erect a new playground area for Cranberry Cove. I will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? And Ms. Green, if you could ask our town accountant to go over the allocations that Community Preservation is making, and make sure that the buckets that they are asking to have that money taken from actually have enough money to fund them. I'm sure the entire Community Preservation budget itself does, but I just want to make sure that we're not asking to have money taken from a historic resource reserve, and we don't have any more money left in that, or open space, and we don't have any money left in that, in which case it would have to come out of undesignated.
Absolutely.
And hopefully, our accountant understands that. Article Sixteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer thirty-five thousand from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve for the purpose of restoring some of the landscaping at Camp Kawani. I will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Article Seventeen is a little funky. To see if the town will vote to develop a plan for Metro Chamber of Commerce to create a communication plan for Hanson businesses to support and revitalize the TIF committee. I think things got conflated on that article. Like, I think Mr. DeFrias sent an email, and I think two initiatives got mushed together. What I believe is that he's talking about the pitch book that the Economic Development Committee discussed creating, that we would use to try to encourage businesses to locate in Hanson, and that we would work with the Metro Chamber to do that, but I don't think it had anything to do with revitalizing the TIF committee. So if you could just take off that and revitalize the TIF committee at the end, and then we need a dollar amount and an explanation. So, I don't think we can even really place and recommend this until we have that cleaned up, but it doesn't mean that we can't close the warrant, right, Ms. Green?
That's correct. It's in here. We just need more information.
Okay. Article Eighteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer fifteen hundred dollars from free cash for the Economic Development Committee Outreach Program for Hanson Businesses, and to conduct outreach to bring businesses to Hanson. So, this was the Economic Development Committee is literally going to be sending out letters to all of the businesses, letting them know that we've got an Economic Development Committee, and letting them know about our TIF committee, and that if they're looking to improve or build a new business, or increase their business there, that they should work with the town planner, with the Economic Development Committee. We probably won't spend the whole fifteen hundred dollars, but we need some money to do that for postage and everything.
Can I ask about the explanation? It seems to end.
Yeah, I don't know. We'll need a further explanation. I don't know what happened there, so.
Will be.
Thanks, Mr. Hill. Okay, so if we can reach out to Mr. DeFrias and just get that little expanded explanation. So, absent the explanation being complete, if we could vote to place Article Eighteen.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Okay. And Article Nineteen, to see if the town will vote to reduce the interest rate applicable to tax deferral and recovery agreements entered into pursuant to general law, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Five, Clause Forty-one A, which provides for property tax deferral for certain qualified seniors. Would such reduced rate to apply to taxes assessed for any fiscal year beginning on or after July first, 2023, or take any action related there to? And this is to reduce the tax rate for seniors. So, any discussion on that? Okay.
It defers the tax.
It defers them, yes. And, so, I will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right. Article Twenty, to see if the town will vote to increase the gross receipts that seniors may have in the prior calendar year to be eligible to defer property taxes from twenty to forty thousand. Again, that's proposed by the Board of Assessors. And the explanation's kind of self-explanatory. I will entertain a motion to place and recommend. Okay?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Article Twenty-one, to see if the town will vote to transfer twenty-two thousand from free cash for the purchase of sixteen ballistic vests with carriers, or take any action in relation there to. I will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Article.
I like the senior stuff.
Article Twenty-two, to see if the town will broke the provisions of Chapter Forty-four, Fifty-three F and a half of the Massachusetts General Law ceasing the, I don't know why that didn't, that doesn't look right. Can we just double-check the provisions that are being cited, but anyway?
Right.
Ceasing the Hanson Transfer Station is in enterprise fund effective fiscal year 2024. As we know, Mrs. Pennetti came in and spoke to us about this in the last meeting. I do not think it's appropriate for us to have this flow chart in the actual warrant. We can have it as a handout, as a separate handout. I don't have a problem with that, but generally speaking, we don't have ancillary information in the warrant. So if we remove that, I will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Article Twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to purchase and install software program for managing leave and attendance. And obviously, we're gonna need the dollar amount on that, but the explanation is self-explanatory, and again, this is something this board has talked about, and welcome to 2023, where we actually have computerized attendance. So, I will entertain a motion to place simply because we don't have the dollar amount yet.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Okay, great. Article Twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash or raise and appropriate seventy-five hundred to treat invasive phragmities at Smitty's Bond. Do we want, I'm curious, on that article and on Article Twenty-five in particular, forty thousand dollars seems like a lot of money compared to what I think they've gotten in the past, and they are doing good work, and I have no doubt about that, but we are in a cash crunch this year. So, I'm wondering, maybe we will vote to place, and then see if we could get somebody from Conservation, if we could get the chair from Conservation. I will entertain a motion to place Article Twenty-four.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? And I will entertain a motion to place Article Twenty-five.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Article Twenty-six, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of money in the amount of fifteen thousand for emergency repairs to pay private ways, which the town has authorized the highway department to plow. I think that's rather self-explanatory. I will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Article Twenty-seven, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of money in the amount of ten thousand, eight hundred dollars for sealing and painting of the garage shop roof. And in his explanation, he says the complete replacement would be two hundred thousand, and obviously, with the future of the existing highway building hanging in the balance, he's choosing to do something rather judicious and just do a patch drop. I will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Article Twenty-eight, to see if the town will vote to, we're gonna need a dollar amount on this one, Ms. Green. So, given that, that we don't have a dollar amount, this is a situation where, as you recall, Mr. Dugan from FinCom and Mrs. Pennetti from the Board of Health told us that there may be a shortfall between what they budgeted and what they've spent, and to the extent that there is, that we would need to have this article. So, I will entertain a motion to place, but not recommend, because we don't know the dollar amount yet.
Was it a two hundred and twenty-eight thousand?
No, no, no. This is, this is this fiscal year, not the overall transfer station deficit. It's this fiscal year. Mike wasn't even sure if there was a deficit yet. They haven't totally crunched the numbers till June thirtieth, but just out of an abundance of caution in case there is a disconnect.
Okay, so moved to place.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? Article Twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash or available funds to sum of five thousand, two hundred and fifty for the purpose of purchasing DUO multi-factor authentication. I will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Article Thirty, this was the one that, one of the ones that Tony just went over. So, I don't think we want to recommend, because again, he said planning hasn't a hundred percent approved all of these, so I will entertain a motion to place.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Okay. Thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, sum of money for capital improvements and purchases for the items printed below for the towns departments listed below, or take any other action or relative action or relative there to. I don't think the or should be there. Any other action relative there to. Okay, so, we're gonna need an explanation for that, and do we feel like this is the full enchilada here?
Think so, yeah.
You do?
I think it came out to, what, three, a little, three hundred and something thousand dollars?
Three hundred and thirteen is what it showed here.
No, I know, but we were, the Capital Improvement Committee was allocated one percent of the budget, right? So I think that that came out to like three hundred and thirty thousand.
Oh, all right, so you're saying.
So we came right up against it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to place and recommend. I mean, the explanation's gonna be, these articles were, you know, proposed by the Capital Improvement Committee after meeting with all department heads. So, I will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Okay. Articles Thirty-two, Thirty-three, Thirty-four, Thirty-five are all Whitman Hanson Regional School District capital improvement requests that seem to have jumped the track and were not proposed by Capital Improvement Committee. So you guys don't think that that was gonna be included in your matrix?
I think it's included in the matrix.
I'm sorry, you're not, it's not included in your recommendations?
No, because we don't have enough money. All we could afford with the allocation was three things.
Okay, so, I'm, hmm, I don't want it to be in the warrant if we're, we've got a Capital Improvement Committee who's saying we don't have enough money, because I don't want to run the risk that we're gonna have people vote to. So I think we need to strike these.
Even Thirty-two, which is below the limit?
Well, we don't have the money. I mean, we'd, and, and I know that there were concerns about equity, you know, across the schools, so, you know, I wouldn't want Indian Head to be getting something that we can't do for the other schools that we have. That wouldn't make any sense. Where do people stand on this? Do we want to strike them? Or do we want to place, and we can, we can vote to open up the warrant and remove articles up the road, right, before it goes to print?
We can.
Yeah. So do we want to move to place, but not, or do we want to remove these?
I mean, I would refer to Joe if, if Capital Improvement couldn't, or as we said earlier, there's not enough money for them.
No.
Yeah.
And we're in a budget, I mean, we're in a budget deficit, so it's not like, you know.
You know, I don't want to speak on behalf of the entire Capital Improvement Committee. That's, but I can only tell you, from my understanding, we were allocated as a Capital Improvement Committee, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We really struggled to prioritize what we could, given that budget. We were able to recommend to the town three hundred and thirteen thousand of the three hundred and fifty. The reason why we couldn't get up to three fifty was because, two things. One, there wasn't something that could bridge the gap in between those, and we have a relatively conservative board in saying that we didn't want to necessarily overspend the budget that was given to us. So this was a sweet spot we landed on. For, just for the sake of putting it out there, the Capital Improvement Committee matrix asks, if, in terms of the number, the amount of dollars that were asked for this year alone, was about twenty-five million dollars. And we were able to spend three hundred and thirteen of it, given the budget we were allocated. So, depending on where the budget is and where people want to spend their money, the Capital Improvement did their job in terms of prioritizing all of those, the twenty-five million dollars into the budget that's presented right now.
That's all we can ask.
And just for a note, we at the Capital Improvement Committee weren't given the explanation. We're giving line items with no, no way to prioritize.
Right, but Frank explained to us that he spoke to the Capital Improvement folks from Whitman, and they kind of had a sense of what it was, but yes, I understand that these full explanations were not. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to remove Article Thirty-two, Thirty-three, Thirty-four, and Thirty-five from the warrant.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Okay. And Article Thirty-six, to see if the town will approve the amended South Shore Regional Vocational School District Regional School District Regional Agreement, which is on file in the town clerk's office, or take any other action in relation hereto. Ms. Green, have we had our legal counsel review the amended South Shore Regional Vocational School District Regional Agreement?
So they have not reviewed it yet. And we basically had this in a PDF and received it in a Word, which have some issues with computers and haven't been able to open. So the town clerk's office does not have it yet. But it's in here based on sample language that the school gave us, so.
But how could we possibly vote to place or recommend if we have not had legal counsel review it? And therefore, I know they're making a representation that it's being updated primarily to include the town of Marshfield. But that certainly seems to imply that there might be other things that were updated. And that makes me a bit antsy, particularly considering this town's history with regional agreements. So I would really like to see, I mean, we can, it takes effect July 1st, 2024. When do we need to, we have an October town meeting. Does it need to be on this warrant?
I will find out if they have to have it on this warrant. I don't know if it's, has anything to do with the town of Marshfield joining, but I will double check to see if it has to go on this warrant.
Because it's saying this would take, you know, the town of Marshfield is adjoining effective July 1st, 2024, and that's the primary update. So I don't want to actually take a motion to vote or place, to place or recommend. We can simply leave it here, but we may end up removing it up the road. And we definitely need to have legal counsel review it, cover to cover. Like, I can't emphasize this enough. We've, we've all got PTSD about what we've been through, so.
Yeah, the reason it's probably on this one is because of all the steps that it has to go through, all the way up to the commission. So, but like you said, it should be reviewed.
Yep.
Do anything with it.
Do you guys agree with that? Okay, all right. Article 37, in accordance with MGL 48, Section 5, the Hanson Planning Board voted on February 27. And then these are all the changes that Tony suggested that they were various states of voting on. So again, in light of that, I would vote that we, I will entertain a motion that we place but not yet recommend contingent upon the planning board coming back.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And that brings us to 38, which is a citizens petition. And there's no need for us to vote to place or recommend.
There's an extra line there, but we're not sure it's going to be fixed. It's the extra new line.
There's a space between. Yeah, we will fix that, yeah.
Okay. And then, so I will entertain a motion to close the, we'll, we'll get to the special town meeting warrant, but to close the May annual town meeting warrant.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. And then the special town meeting, we've got Article 1. And this is the cleanup of various little, little free cash to pay unpaid bills standard, you know, vote. So I will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Article 2, we're going to strike since that's already in, the annual town meeting warrant, to see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funding source to sum of $60,000 to be added to the May 2022 annual town meeting. Article 5, line 40, fire and ambulance salaries to replenish the budget or to take any action thereto. This is to replace money that needed to be used for a rather large retirement buyout that was not planned for. I will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Article 4, again, that was already in the annual town meeting. It's for the private gravel roads, so we don't need to address that. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funding source $73,560 to fund the overtime cost to maintain adequate staffing levels or take any action thereto in relation thereto. These to cover the overtime cost of maintaining four firefighter paramedics on duty while our new hire attends recruit training at Massachusetts Fire Academy. Wow, okay. I will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. See if the town will vote to transfer from free cash $10,000 to fund a financial analysis and development of a financial plan. This is the so-called John Madden Report, which is going to tell us what our future growth is going to look like and therefore what we can budget and plan on for forecasting future budgets. So I will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Article 7, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from free cash $10,000 to hire old colony planning council to update the master plan. I will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And that is it. And so then, therefore, I will entertain a motion to close the special town meeting warrant.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Well done. And now we're going to move right along to the updating the town's policies and procedural manual discussion, which we already voted to place and recommend. But we'd love to hear from you, Ms. Green.
So on this here, there's quite a bit of work that needs to be done to update our policy and procedure manual. My thought is I would like to pursue a community compact grant to assist us with this, this program, this manual. Once we are finished with the wage and classification, which is in progress now, we will be eligible to apply for the next community compact round. So my thought is to apply for a grant for that. It's best to hire a consultant that can look at language, be mindful of any of the updated laws regarding any of the labor or anything surrounding that area, and make sure that the new, the updated policy and procedures manual will be compliant with all new labor laws and human resources laws.
So is that in addition to the money that we're voting to?
Well, we would need to get, we would need to get some quotes for consultants and then apply for the community compact grant.
Right, but we're voting, we have a town meeting warrant article to update the procedures manual, so, I mean, the policies procedures manual. So is the community compact grant going to supplement the amount that we're, we've got in the annual town meeting? Or are we going to strike what we have in the annual town meeting warrant, which we just voted to close, and just apply for the community compact grant?
Well, if town meeting approves funding for that, we don't necessarily need to spend it right away. We can wait and see if we get awarded a community compact. And then if we don't, we can move forward because we do have the money appropriated.
Okay, that makes sense. I don't think you would put a dollar amount in on that one.
Right, we don't have a dollar amount at this point.
Okay, that, I mean, that sounds great. So what, if you had to guess, like, if you could just, you know, spitball it, are we talking about $35,000, $15,000?
I would say more based on what, what we've seen with some of the costs for updating manuals and plans and things like that. I would look between $50,000 and $60,000.
$50,000 and $60,000, okay, all right. Yeah, I mean, it is, the devil's in the details on that. And hopefully, once we get it ironed out and fully fleshed out, we'll have something that we can keep updated on an ongoing basis. Okay. Did anybody have any questions for Ms. Green on that? Did you need us to make a motion to have you apply for the community compact grant?
Sure, if you'd like to, yeah. It can be cleaner that way, yes.
All right. I will entertain a motion to have Ms. Green apply for a community compact grant for the purposes of updating the town's policy and procedures manual.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our funding for town's website discussion, Ms. Green?
Yeah, so actually, our IT director was planning on being here, but he is, he's over at the police station dealing with an issue, a technology issue over there. But I know there was some confusion last time regarding the role that Capital Strategic Solutions is going to play in this. The simplest way that I can describe is we have hired Capital Strategic Solutions as our mechanic, but their service did not include parts. So there are, there are mechanic who is going to help us fix our website, but it's not going to include the, the part of the actual, the, and I wish Steve was here to talk about. The platform, exactly, of the website. So it doesn't include the platform. The ARPA, that's why this is separate from that service.
So who is providing the platform?
So this would be Revise. We would move away from Civic Plus and move towards Revise, which I believe is about $18,900 to implement and build that platform. West Bridgewater has Revise, and the town of Easton has Revise. I have spoke with both of those town administrators, and they are happy with the program. They have no issues with it. They said it's very user-friendly, very easy. And the support that you get from the Revise company, they said, is top-notch, and they never have any issues with it.
And what is the cost for that?
I believe it's about $18,900 to get the platform up and running.
$18,900. And then if we build on your mechanic's analogy, are we getting a oil change here? Or are we getting?
So then Capital Strategic Solutions will join forces with our IT director and help build it from, from the ground up, once we get it in.
Okay, so we're getting a rebuilt engine.
We're getting a rebuilt engine.
I don't even know anything, I'm way over my skis on this. Once I got past oil change, that was.
Yeah, so, I mean, so, you know, they, this is going to include like an oil change and the, but it's not going to include like the filter in the actual oil. So that's what Revise is going to help us with. That's the easiest way that I can describe it.
Okay. Mr. Hickey, yeah, please.
Yeah, chair. The reason that, not only myself, but I can only speak for myself, is that I thought we were getting the tune-up, you know, when we bought the mechanic.
With commu, with?
Yeah.
With, I feel like, I feel like this analogy is actually making things more confusing.
And I just feel like, you know, the $50,000 or the $49,500 that we were spending on them, I really thought we were getting the whole thing. And now we're in it too deep to get out of it. So we need the $18,900 for the parts, for the mechanic to use. And we obviously need the new website in town because ours is terrible. But I just wanted to go on record saying that I thought we were getting the whole deal yet.
And I have to go on record saying that only because I somewhat understand, I'm not, I can't build a website, but I understand all the different moving parts of it. I knew that we were going to have to buy a platform. And we discussed getting rid of Civic Plus, we discussed it.
We did discuss that.
At length.
Yep, that said though, and I agree with you because that was what my understanding was, is I recall it did seem to break along the line of gender in terms of understanding. And I very seldom, you know, bring up the gender card, but that did seem to be the issue. I'm wondering if, you know, facts matter. So I'm wondering if we can just perhaps dig up the recording. Because, because I don't want people to feel like we got bill, sold a bill of goods, that they said one thing, even though Ann and I understood one thing and these guys understood something. There must have been something in there that made people think that they said something different. So can we actually get the recording of the meeting, where we had those folks here, and share it to the rest, to the board, so we can listen to it one more time with feeling?
Right now?
No, not, not right now, no, at half of this meeting. No, no.
I would say this, that, you know, I, specifically the part where I, I went out of my way to say, are there other additional costs that we need to be aware of? Because I said it specifically, because I was thinking along those lines. Because there's three parts to any type of system like this. You have the platform, the coders, and then you have the people that maintain it, which is typically IT. I was under the impression, because I said when they gave us the proposal, is this everything that's built into all of the cost for all of these things? And they specifically said yes, and I kept repeating it over again. To use the mechanic thing, this is like going in for a sticker and realizing you need to buy four new tires. So we're too in it, but we know what, we need to be able to go. Now we've spent so much money, we've, we've earmarked some of these ARPA funds to be able to pay for this stuff. So now, in order to justify the $40,000, we have to spend the extra 20.
Now, see, and I remember, I don't remember the, I think it's Nicole, is she the one with the very short hair?
Yes.
Yeah. I remember Nicole saying, well, your IT director might have to go in, you know, it depends if you use Civic Plus, which you could use, but, you know, we're not going to make all the changes. If you wanted it to look different and you're using Civic Plus, you'd have to buy that additional package for Civic Plus. And she kind of went into this whole, and so that's why I thought, well, she's not doing the software part of it. She, we have to buy that platform, but.
I get where everyone's coming. I do, I honestly, I understand how we got here. For me, it's just a matter of, we started off the conversation by talking about being in a $1.2 million deficit, trying to chip away at it, and we're talking about $20,000, which might be, I don't want to minimize this, a drop in the bucket compared to what we have to overcome. But I am trying to be mindful that we don't have a lot of wiggle room. So, you know, every little bit counts. And I just feel like, what you just said, I can see from their perspective how they could, but that's not what we discussed, like, literally. It was like, is this all the money that we're going to spend? Is there any additional cost? That wiggle room gray area might get them out of the confusion type of thing. But I just don't feel like it was, we were only given the full detail. But again, I'm not against the platform. I think if there was a proposal separately, it's fine.
So no, see, I, my thing was, I didn't even think they had the capability to be the platform provider. Like, it wasn't even in their wheelhouse, you know, like, so I just didn't.
I remember, I recall asking that question. I was thinking they were going to be soup to nuts, and then they said, no, we don't provide the platform.
Yes, I remember, because you, well, because that's your, your wheelhouse. You know that, so.
But then they said that they will have, no, they actually specifically said, so it'll be good to get the recording to find out exactly.
I just think, you know, because I just don't want, I don't want anybody to feel like anybody was duplicitous there, so. Okay, so did you need anything from us, or that was just a clarification on that, Ms. Green?
Just a clarification.
Okay. And then we've already praised, be to God, we've, no, there's no motion on that. We have reviewed the annual and special town meeting warrant articles. And that brings us to the Harbor to the Bay Ride scheduled for September 23rd, 2023. You've got in here, you know, yes, the last one. Chief Mix very clearly said he never has a problem with these folks. They always follow the rules, they're really great, he's never had any issues. And he had no reason why he wouldn't approve this. So I will entertain a motion to allow the Harbor to the Bay Ride scheduled for September 23rd, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Approve waiver or permit fee application for Camp Kwani Boathouse work. And similarly, approve waiver or permit fee application for town hall repair. Seems a bit silly for us to be charging ourselves.
So moved, done, both.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then award certificate for Patty Norton. As most of you know, and I think all of you have had the privilege of working with Patty, she embodies a dedicated civic, you know, minded individual. She and her husband John have been on Hanson Historical Commission, Historical Society, Community Preservation. They've been, you know, folks that have worked at the polls. I mean, you name it, and they've, they've done it. And so we've got a certificate to, to sign for Patty that I think the Community Preservation Committee had asked us to sign. So if you, Ms. Green, I don't know if you've got the original, if you could sign that. And I don't think we need a motion to do that or anything of that sort. Okay, great. Then vote to reappoint Ruth Ann Fleming as the Board of Register Star for a three-year term ending March 31st, 2026. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Any burning, deep burning desire to update anybody on committees?
No.
Okay. I think Mrs. Rain shutting down committee discussions.
Because I would finally have the highway meeting next week. Okay.
So intimidating.
Shut down that discussion.
Seriously, just a quick, I spoke with Kerry today. They're going to be doing the electrical, and then hopefully by Friday, they get the insulation in. So we're looking at another week and a half.
For the senior second.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you know, I have to say Kerry and Well, I mean, you know, I have to say Kerry and Charlie have done a wonderful job of supporting Mary, and the Camp Kwani guys have done a wonderful job. It's the best of our town employees doing what they do best, so.
Absolutely.
It's wonderful. Thanks, Jim. Any, any further burning, deep, deep desired updates?
Fox and Fields?
Okay, all right. One-day liquor licenses. I will entertain a motion to approve as printed in our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then approve open session minutes for March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-
Yeah, I'm, I need to table it.
I thought I was losing it because I didn't see them. Okay, and that brings us to our-
Wait, to the boat.
Oh.
Where, where does the boat go?
We don't have the boat actually on our agenda, Ms. McDowell.
Hmm, the boat fell off.
So can we put that on our agenda for net, for the next meeting? Was there any need for us to vote for that in advance of that? For instance, is the boat actually currently going to be moored there or not yet?
Not yet.
Okay. All right, so if we could just put that on for the next, the next meeting, that would be great. And Ms. Green, that brings us to Town Administrator Report.
All right. Vice Chair, members of the Board. So last week I had provided some updates for building from our Building Inspector Kerry Glass, and I have some further updates regarding some of the items brought up last week. So in regards to the Heap property on Liberty Street, and excuse me, sixteen Liberty Street, that, the complaint on that is in the hands of the Plymouth County Sheriff, so we're just waiting for it to be served any day now. Regarding Ransom Road and the structure that is in the front of the property, Town Council was involved with that matter in the very beginning, so they are going to continue on with that matter to file a complaint and hand the complaint to the Plymouth County Sheriff for, for service. So Town Council is moving forward on that with Ransom Road. Also, Mr. Glass has finished with the courses for the certification. He will be taking his first exam this Friday, March twenty-fourth. There's a total of three exams, so he hopes to have the process done by the end of May. So progress.
Yep.
And as you know, Lynn and myself have been continuing to work on the warrant preparation of annual town meeting. With what was voted tonight, we can firm up and, and clean it up. We will continue moving in that direction. Also, I've been working with the accountant on our budget based on what the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District School Committee certified their assessment on March fifteenth. We've had to readjust some numbers, but working with Eric today, we were able to bring our deficit down from one-point-three-eight million down to six-hundred-and-sixteen thousand. So we are really working diligently to bring our budget down to a balanced budget.
And Ms. Green, may I just interject for a moment? I had an opportunity today to speak with the Chair of the Whitman Select Board, and they are as concerned as we are with the school assessment being in the seven to eight percent, when we have very clearly expressed that the absolute maximum that we can pay is four percent, a four percent increase. One of the concerns is that over the last two years, the district has used one-time money, grant money, in the budget. And so when we're saying it's a level-funded budget, that's really not accurate because it's level-funded plus the grant. And so to keep that budget maintained at that level is in fact quite a large increase. And with our very modest growth that we have in the town, this is, is, is beyond unsustainable. And, and I think you've, we heard from our town accountant on, you know, on, on our growth projections, and we don't have any magic, you know, magic pill here that's going to change this. So one of the things I wanted to pass by you, I had mentioned to, when Mr. Lematina and I spoke, that I thought it might be a good idea if we had a joint meeting between the two Select Boards, and not to include really the school committee, but just between the two Select Boards to talk about what does this look like for this town meeting? Because even with what Ms. Green has told us, that's a large deficit. And, you know, I, I don't want to hypothesize on how we might bridge that gap, but we're all adults, and I think we know that that means costs need to be cut, and there's only so many ways to do that. So I, I guess mostly I'm just asking, what is your appetite to sit down with the Select Board in Whitman? With the understanding that we would be speaking in a united voice, the two towns saying, here is what we can afford. We support education and we, we understand that there are needs, but we can't eviscerate the rest of our budgets. We have competing needs. That's what we do as the Select Board, is we have to balance the, all of the competing needs in the town. It can't be, you know, one, one group versus another. So, and I, and what are your thoughts about meeting together? To really just have a conversation about how, about how we can communicate to the district about what, what each town is able to afford?
I want to think it's a good idea.
Mr. Hickey?
Can I go last?
Oh, gosh, okay. Sure.
I, I think it's a fine idea.
Okay.
People put us here to have conversations.
And I will say, Ms. Green's already been in contact with, with their Town Administrator. One of the things that I've really liked this year that I've seen for the first time ever is capital improvement reaching out to capital improvement, FinCom reaching out to FinCom, Select Board to Select Board, Town Administrator to Town Administrator. This is the way it needs to be, because we need to calibrate. So.
It's amazing when you, when you tell people to start collaborating and give them the resources to be able to do that, how everybody starts collaborating and to use their resources.
It's amazing. It's a beautiful thing. Mr. Hill, thoughts? You're okay. All right, Mr. Hickey.
No, in the spirit of working together, I'm not so sure, I'm not so sure that we don't want the school committee involved, but we do have to figure, I guess we have to figure it out with the two towns first.
That, that, yes, I, I, thank you, yes. I wasn't, obviously, we have to communicate with the, with the-
Right.
-school committee, but I, what I think, you know, is the first preliminary matter is to have the two towns just talk realistically about what we're each able to afford and, and what this looks like going forward, and, and what, how we would like this communication flow to be happening in the future. And, and then address, you know, what are we going to do for this year? And then, then at the point that we're in agreement, and hopefully we can come to agreement, then we'd have a conversation with, you know, whomever, the school committee or the superintendent or all of the above.
Sure. And, I mean, I wouldn't want to hold up any kind of process, so I do think it's a great idea that, you know, the ten of us would sit down and, you know, discuss things that's happened in the recent, recent past, and how we're going to move forward to get this done. I mean, it, you know, I think it's about time.
Yeah, and I, I, you know, I just want to, I, I don't want to save a rattle, I just want to be like, let's be real, let's just have an honest, open conversation. You know, our, our, our finances are an open book.
Yeah.
It's real clear what, what we've got, and even just tonight, the things that we discussed. And there's a lot of things that we're putting off doing. We're making modest headway, but, you know, thanks to creativity and grants and all kinds of other, you know, and hard work, but, but, you know, we, we can't got our town government. We just can't. And, and we certainly don't have enough time at this point, nor do I know that, know that, nor do I feel particularly strongly that we'd want to do this to even entertain an override. So, you know, that leaves us very little choice as far as how we would approach this unless we really are able to get some agreement from the school district that they would revise that assessment. So.
And kudos to you and Randy for at least trying to put this together. I don't know if the Whitman Select can have a meeting.
They were going to discuss it tonight, and I don't know, you know, if they don't, if they voted down, then we'll be talking to ourselves, but I, I don't think they will. I think, I think-
No, I think it's a great idea.
The Whitman Board, they're a good board.
Oh, they're a great board.
They're good people. They really are.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I mean, I don't think this is in any way a controversial thing. It really isn't. And people elected us to have conversations, especially difficult ones, and come up with solutions and not just kick the can down the road. We, this, the minute we solve this problem for this fiscal year, we literally have to start working on next year's problem because it's going to be worse.
Exactly.
So the best thing we can do is just get in a room and just figure it out.
But, and, you know, this is proactive instead of reactive.
Absolutely.
Which I really pride this board on, that we've been doing over the last year or so, and this is just another step.
Okay, all right. I thought you were going to say, hell, no, we won't go. I went, sure.
Oh, no.
Okay, all right, I'm glad to hear that. All right, Ms. Green, I'm sorry to hoodwink your, your update there.
No, no, I mean, it, it's a big part of the conversation, and our town accountant will be present for the next meeting on April fourth to, again, go over the numbers as, as we move forward, we crunching these numbers. And the, the last week, I've been involved in a number of, I've had, I've devoted time to legal matters, public records requests, even I had to testify at a trial, court trial on Friday for a suit against the town. So it's been, it's been a busy week, but we've, we're moving forward, and I think we're right on time with everything for special and annual town meeting. And it, it's great having conversations with Whitman, Town Administrator, and Select Board, and Finance Committee, because I think we can really make a lot of headway with having these collaborative conversations. And that will finish my Town Administrator Report for today.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn our regular open session and to reconvene in wage and personnel.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Agreed.
All right, I'm going to call wage and personnel order. I don't have the agenda. I have the minutes, I don't have the agenda.
Oh, sorry, I thought that was the agenda.
So I don't-
You have the minutes, you don't have the agenda.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. I want to miss it this time. Want to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? It's, it's on the agenda, so we got to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Okay. Stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right. Let's go right into new business. So discuss Philly's Facility Manager Job Description and Salary Range. Ms. Green, if you want to take that away?
Yes, do we have a copy of the job description?
We have the minutes.
Did everyone have a copy of the job description?
I got two sets of minutes.
Yeah, that's what I answered, two sets of minutes.
I have Facilities Manager Job Description.
I think I thought I didn't do the minutes and I didn't, I-
No, it's fine.
Didn't realize I put the minutes last.
Believe me, with a packet this big, you did, great.
In your packets, you'll see a job description for Facilities Manager. And there, there will be some, there will be some tweaking to do with this, but we put this together based on a, a neighboring town that recently has hired a Facilities Manager full-time. I mean, we, we have an employee right now who basically is doing this job, he, and, and a number of other things that are outside his regular job description. It's, it's really crucial for the town to think of going in this direction, and I think that really came to light with the window project in the back of the town hall, in what became evident as they removed the trim and sill of what they discovered underneath. You know, a Facilities Manager would be responsible for doing assessments for us to see, make sure we're following maintenance schedules, not just for town hall, but all our public buildings.
So where you say this has some tweaks, I'm assuming we're looking for a recommendation or a motion to approve this. What tweaks do you plan on making?
Um, let's see. I thought at one point the other town was still listed in here, but we might have gotten-
No, it's in the middle.
Oh, okay, then, then this is ready to go.
So the way it's presented is-
Way it's presented, yes, yes. I just, I thought there might be, still be another town listed, but it was all removed, so.
And do we have any, do we have any supplemental material for the salary range? Where are we updating it from to?
Well, I've only basically, I did reach out to the social managers. Some towns do not have a Facilities Manager. A neighboring town, again, just brought a Facilities Manager on board, and their salary range was, I believe, between seventy and eighty thousand.
And this would be a forty-hour full, a week?
This would be a forty, a forty-hour-a-week position, a full-time position.
Okay, and you're thinking seventy to eighty, is that what you said?
Yes.
Seventy to eighty. And we've run this by the appropriate people, we can afford this?
So it would, it's in the bylaw, and yes, actually, running, talking with our town accountant on this, there is a line item under Public Property Facilities that has not, has a, a funding, but it, there's never, it's never been used, so it's always been there. We can move that, transfer that to the Facilities Manager line to come up with a salary, salary of seventy-three-five-five-five for the first year. So it would not, not, no additional monies would come out. We've got the money in the budget. And then what we do for that position that would become vacant is possibly reduce it to a part-time nineteen-hour-a-week position moving forward.
And all that's contained within a, a sustainable budget?
Yes.
It's not just a one-time thing to get us through this?
Right, no, right, yes.
All right. Any discussion from anybody else?
Does this need to be included in our town meeting warrant in any way?
It is in there.
It is already in there.
It's, it's in there, yes.
Yeah, we actually agreed.
Yeah, it's in the wage and personnel bylaw. It is, it's, yes.
No, I, look, at the risk of being boring, you guys know what I think about this individual, and I also have thought for a long time, our prior board had talked ad nauseam about the fact that we needed a Facilities Director. It's so clear. We've got so many buildings and we don't have anybody who's got the sole, their sole purpose is looking at the condition of the buildings and making sure we're keeping them up, and that's just ridiculous. So.
And he also is, he has coordinated so many, getting quotes for, for projects, being in compliance with the thirty-B procurement, overseeing the work being done at the senior center. He's been crucial. He's been an essential piece of all of that, and it just shows that, that we've got somebody employed by the town ready to step into this role.
But even if we didn't, that, the point I want to make is I never want to create a position because we've got a person, you know, who, who either deserves it or can do it or whatever. Like, going forward, we need a Facilities Manager, so.
I agree with that. You can't create a position for a person.
Exactly.
You need, you need the position because the town needs the position.
Exactly.
I think that's the best sell. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the job description as presented and increase the salary line item to seventy to eighty thousand, forty hours a week.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor? All right. That will be five oh. Then we have reimbursement of eyeglasses for the Executive Assistant to the Town Administrator and Select Board. Ms. Green?
So there was a, just a request for, as we know, some of the clerical, the clerical union has in, a provision in their contract that they would be reimbursed eyeglasses every three years. And our, I, I just think it, it's a, it's important for the administrator, our Executive Assistant, to have the same type of-
Benefit.
Benefit?
Yeah.
Yes. To that with, with, as far as eyeglasses. Having, it's, you have to see to be able to do this work.
So I, this is just me being naive, just for the, the process. This is, so this would be a wage and personnel thing? This wouldn't be a, a selectmen thing? And why, why would it-
Well, because that position is in wage and personnel. It's, it's in the wage and personnel bylaw, so that's why we're bringing it before wage and personnel.
Okay, so you're asking, so you're asking to have this added to the job or for asking for a literal reimbursement?
For just, yeah, just a benefit to add it to the, to the job, to the job description.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yes, just to add, yes, to add a reimbursement for eyeglasses every three years.
Into the job description.
Into the job description for the Executive Assistant to the Select Board and Town Administrator.
Any questions on that?
Into the job description? That seems weird. I don't know, it just could be like the late hour, but it's not.
We could put it in a, we could put it, because it's not a contract, we could put it in it like the employment letter.
Okay, all right, yeah.
An offer letter?
Yeah.
An employment offer letter is, is a benefit.
So update the offer letter for, to reflect this new benefit you're offering?